Okay, we're live.
Okay, we're live.
Okay.
It worked earlier.
Mine's still on.
You're still on?
I just want it in earlier.
I just tried to pull it up and it does the whole blank screen thing again, so.
I mean, I can use my computer.
I'll just get it.
It's me.
So I do have it unmuted. Just somewhere.
Is Eric gonna be showing up tonight?
I haven't heard from Eric.
You haven't heard from Eric, so he should just go on in?
Yeah.
If something with graduation or anything.
Well, I'm lost here. But you can't get out.
I'm a lawyer.
He had physical therapy this morning.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
Although you take them.
Back in. My back is because why you can't get it.
Okay.
Yeah, neither one of mine do it either. I gave up on that thing.
Okay, well, we're gonna get started then. We'll start with the committee meetings. And the first thing I'd like to talk about is the food truck ordinance. We had a citizen come in and ask us to reconsider on the application. Currently, the ordinance that we have in place and then the application that goes with it, sets the, as far as the fees and such. There's only two kinds of fees on it. One is we're up to six months for $200 and one's for over six months to a year for $300. They are asking that we look at either a one day or a weekend day, like a two or three day, and come with something more reasonable so they could have food trucks occasionally come to their location. So I'm opposed to changing it. Why is that?
A, we had this up for discussion for a long time. We opened it up, we had people come in, we worked with our business owners to get it exactly the way we thought was appropriate. I don't feel like at this point there's any reason to change that. Where it's coming from, if they want it on private property, it can go on private property.
Does it say it can go on private property?
Yeah, that was part of it.
So they could put it, so they could put it in the patio, just not on the street?
Or they could pay the annual fee for them and have them come as many times as they want.
Which is 300 bucks.
Which is 300 bucks.
But what is wrong with having a one or two day for a special, you know, if there's something going on that we?
I just.
I, I agree to disagree, I think.
My little thing, then they're here and then they're gone. And we have business owners that are here that they're the ones that are getting hit with the requests from the schools, from fundraising, all of it. You have a food truck that comes in once a day, has a great day, our local business has a horrible day. I'm being dramatic, maybe, but.
That's where my opinion too.
It's a novel idea, right? Like, oh, everybody wants something different. I, I love a food truck, but I don't wanna punish our local businesses.
I don't think we're punishing them for something. They're not gonna be there like every day. I think what we're doing is punishing the vendors that can't, they said they can't afford to spend the $300.
But then those business owners can cover that cost. Those, those, these same business owners live there.
But they would never do it on here when we put this in place.
Yeah, but, yeah, I understand, Cave Creek was down, down in town, so.
But it was an impact.
But they would have food trucks down there on a regular basis, but they'd have a variety. I don't think they wanna spend $300 on six different, they wanna get a variety of food trucks to come in. Like Malvern has Food Truck Night, that's, they do that once during the fairgrounds. That's going on every month. I don't think the local business owners are upset about it over there.
I, I don't know. This is just my opinion.
What about other councilors?
What do you think?
I know, we ran into, we ran into that same concern when we had RagBri, right? We had all of those vendors that had the huge presence in town and it took away from all the storefronts and all the local businesses that are continually contributing to our kids, to the schools. And, I mean, if they're not willing to, I mean, under, I don't know. I, if you guys went through, and I didn't even have all that information, like the fact that you guys went through all that with the business owners to put something in place that was reasonable. And if they can park it on private property with no fees, then.
So they don't have to even get a permit then if they're on their own property?
Did they have?
Chipotle comes down, don't they have a food permit from us, but they're down at Baumgart's?
Yes.
So why do they have to get one if they're on Baumgart's property?
They do. What's the fee for them to get the thing to be on private property? Is there a fee or is it just the license?
Well, I think we need to look at some, maybe add it in for private property then. What did they pay?
It was.
Did they pay a $300 once?
That's what I'm saying, if they had to have a license, did it include a fee that they paid?
Yeah, they still had to pay even if it was private property.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, it's just a matter of.
So you're making.
There with the property owner agrees to it.
Are they paying the $300 fee then?
Yes.
So they're paying the 300, so they're just coming back more often than not. I just think we're missing the vote for not offering it for an occasional, because Cave Creek is a business of ours now too, and they wanting, they're wanting to offer that.
Well, they put it on their property.
But they still have, they still have, they still have to pay $300 for one weekend.
Private property makes them have to pay.
Isn't it 300 a year?
Yes.
Yeah, but they got one there every weekend, they just wanna do it every day.
But they have them more than, they have a few vendors. Yes, I, I get that. Well, then maybe it's that we give a vent, a business an opportunity to pay a fee and they can have whoever, I don't know. I am willing to be loyal to our local businesses on this, that have been here, they worked on that map with this, they worked with everything that went into it.
And aren't they not supposed to be so close to our restaurant?
Yeah, right, they have, that was, we worked on that map, we went through all of that. And yeah, I wanna be a good partner, but I have a hard time believing that they can't cover a $300 fee. They're probably making that back in one night. And it may be not fair of me to guess somebody's revenue.
But I don't know if that is the case, because I didn't, that's why they're saying, no, they won't come.
I'm talking about the business owner.
So here's what Cave Creek needs to put up, but, but are you open?
Split the cost with that one.
Are you open to, if they did a $300 fee and then whoever they get just fills out an application as long as they're licensed and they just go off of the Cave Creek?
What is, what is, what are they recommending as far as the fee, can I ask?
Well, Matt had found for me, Waverly, Iowa does a one day and a one week. They, their fees are this. First of all, our fee is six months, up to six months, $200. Over six months to a year, $300. This city, and he looked at others, but this was one that had a variety. One day, $50, one week, for seven days, $100, one month, $125, a year, $250 for the whole year.
Unlimited amount of times.
Unlimited amount of times. But they don't bring in food trucks up there all the time, it's just on occasion, but.
But they wanna do a variety.
Put it. Well, I don't know.
I mean, that goes back to then we have that map, right?
It doesn't list that in what we got. Do you know what the map, like, did it say how many feet from us or from the?
Yeah, it should be in the, wasn't it, isn't it 100, 150?
We had to pull it up and look at it.
And then we had the map and we had it all marked off and we had the big ordeal of if they can go down to the park. Like, we have been through this.
But that's why we have amendments to ordinance, is if there's something we need to change, we need to at least look into it. I am looking to see the ordinance on.
Do you want the references or?
It's in our, it's on your.
I don't see where it mentions.
It doesn't, the only thing we got was the ordinance number 920. And it was the amendment, amendment to the city code.
Yeah, it's only two pages.
Yeah.
There's no map, doesn't even mention the fees, the one on that.
Doesn't mention fees, it doesn't mention location.
Maybe you guys didn't update that, and I don't know, because this was after I left.
But it hasn't been.
The application for.
There is ordinance 919, which is mobile food vendors, that's a different one.
Oh, 919, so we turned it the wrong one in?
That's the one I found online with that.
Almost look at 919. Is it 150 feet?
I was just looking at that part, I haven't got through that yet.
We have the wrong one that's in our packet then. It is warm in here.
Can we turn the air on? Is it just me, I usually run hot, I don't know.
I actually turned it down from 76 to 72.
Oh, girlfriend, I live in that 60 degree weather in the house. Okay.
It does, not the application?
We have all of that in there, like, how could it not? Please, I'm a nice.
So the mobile food vendor locations on public property, they park above a property or street as approved in the license application. Mobile units also are prohibited for parking within 100 foot of any of the side or however seating on the ground level, such as when people sell food or beverages.
That's what it was, what was it, 100 feet?
100 feet, it's only advised one hour of course, opening to an hour after closing. And then there's a push cart section too, but.
It shows 100 feet.
I think the distance to our reference is.
100, because for some reason I thought we pushed it to 150, I couldn't remember.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Well, I know she spoke to the Chinese place and they didn't care, because they're not open on weekends. So they didn't care for the Saturday night thing. But I told her she didn't need to be here tonight, because I was just gonna ask permission to at least review it. So I'd like to at least let us look at that and maybe do, come back and then she can come back and speak to you guys in a couple weeks.
How long ago was the, like, what businesses were, were involved in that process?
Oh, I mean, Adrian, you guys would've been here, right? Or Julie maybe was here when we talked about.
I think it was two years ago, because I, I wanted, like, I don't know if it's the ordinance or amendment, I don't know what it would be, but for events, because, yeah, Cave Creek may come for either rest of food truck, but.
But you guys.
Right.
We don't.
And that's why I thought we did like an amendment for special events, we did.
I wanted to, but I couldn't make it the night and then kind of got dropped. But, I mean, for you know me, I'm always gonna go local if I can. It's just really hard for me ever, local food vendor, like Adrian's at the street dance, slinging all beer. I usually will have the Mexican on my can, but like, I, I get told no, that it's not an option for local vendors to come help me, and so I have to look elsewhere, but then they can't pay.
So I'd like, so can we nicely review it then and come back with some suggestions for you guys to talk about the next meeting? And then I'll have Jenny here, June, if you wanna show up.
I was gonna say, I wanna make sure then, like, even Adrian, I wanna know that the buck snorts. Like, I want all, everybody that this is gonna impact, because when we make a change to this, it's not just gonna impact the Cave Creek and the Chinese. This then applies throughout the town and all the rule for however long until it's time to change it again. And so I don't, I don't wanna do it where it's like, we're just gonna talk about it and the business owners have no idea what we're doing and we are not getting input from anybody else.
Jen, you were wanting something that was just event specific.
Well, I don't wanna steal from Jenny's thunder, because I know that she was here kind of on her own accord, but then I was planning on coming in to talk to you guys about it, you know, as I started getting the street dance stuff ready. But yes, that's, it's really hard when it's a nonprofit group trying to hold an event. We, I don't have $300 for the, for the, all of our money in scholarship.
And it's for one night, and it's for one night, and you don't wanna have to spend.
If I can go local, which we always try to go local first, then if I can't go local, I would rather have another food truck from another place in Loma for a night, knowing they're here for one night and everyone's busy anyway, because it's homecoming and I don't have to worry about stealing this because I tried already to, you know what I mean? And then I know they're not, they're done, because their license isn't for six months. Whereas if I make them do a six month license, they can come back whenever they want for six months and then I am stealing business from, you know, our local businesses.
And you've planned, you've planned other events like that, so what's a reasonable amount to ask for a one day event?
So it seems like, I did some, I did some digging too, and it seems like if it's a one day license, it's $50.
If that's what there is, I think that's where you.
Because I'm about to.
This one's $50.
That's what I found when I looked online, anywhere from $50 to $75 a day.
Yeah.
I gave Angie some of the.
Yeah, I've got it.
So I don't know if it could be, because I fill out an event, you know, an application, I give her a license or something. I don't know if it could be a part of that, or, I don't know. But I got, I was planning on doing more homework and then coming and talking to you guys, but I, then I found out this was being talked about tonight.
Well, I'm glad you came, because I would really just like permission for us to start working on, maybe make, making some suggestions and get your input, and then Jenny can come to the next meeting and get her own reasoning and what she's done. And, and yes, I think we need to talk to all the businesses that are gonna be impacted, but I don't think this is an unreasonable request to do a one day.
I don't, if we set it up correctly. No, go for it.
I'm right on the square in two places. Right, we always, we do what we do sometimes, in the ground, we live off, we can't, Friday and Saturday, both places. That's when the food trucks would be here. So that makes it difficult. I'm all for Jenny on special community events, fundraisers, things like that, bringing in people from outside. Although I think we need to exhaust all local resources first, local people, local people with food trucks, there's something, you know. In Mills County, if you can't get something that go further out, stay with Iowa, if possible. But it definitely will, I mean, I know every weekend, what will happen is multiple different food trucks coming, you know, different one every, providing variety, something new, which will be difficult for people like us, pizza all the time. We're able to mix it up a little bit, it's not a constant what we do there. I think it would be tough. And soon we'll be, Cave Creek will be able to renew our license, so. I mean, it's gonna be tough.
And what's to say if they do a, a one day $50 license? And then two months down the road, they wanna come back, do they get to do another one day $50 license?
Yes, then they'll have.
So they can do that six times?
Then they, well, they'll have to think that through, because then they'll be paying as much as a year if they do it.
They do it five times. And they make money, they make money, they make money, they take money, they take money, and they take money. I'm totally against it. We, we worked through this, we talked to other towns, we've talked to other counties, we done due diligence on setting this ordinance up, and the first time somebody comes in here and says, I don't like this, we need to change it, we're gonna change it. That's just me.
No, I, I agree.
If we, if we do our due diligence, we, we research, we set this stuff up, we vote on it, we speak to the citizens, the business owners, we listen, we put this in place. Unless there's something really drastically wrong with it, this is the way it is.
Is there a separate event process that Jim was talking about?
But maybe we just did something different for RagBri.
We did do something different for RagBri.
They had a whole separate ordinance for RagBri.
We started the conversation, but then had a.
RagBri was its own thing. Because I knew separate ordinance on, everything on RagBri, then it disappeared.
Yeah.
Something like RagBri, that didn't have to be that huge, but all, all four of it, that's very, that's very.
Right, I think special events are different. I think changing this for every, every day, I'm, I'm not a fan.
Or even if it was just like a, a, a special price for Mills County, or, or, because there are a lot of local food trucks, and I have found a lot of them. And, you know, two of them that are coming to the street dance this year are local. So, I mean, I'm always gonna go.
But currently they have to pay for the big one, yeah.
By saying the big one, we're saying they're buying the six month one for $200.
I'm not sure what they're doing.
Yeah. They'll have to decide.
For minutes, they're usually buying the one year that I've seen. When I go out and inspect them, they're usually doing the one year permit. And the ones I could go down, like the Chick-fil-A truck, Bruins, barbecue, they do very well when they come in here. That's why they keep coming back and studying up what they do. To me, I think, I have mixed emotions about it, because I'm the one that's gonna have to go out and inspect the trucks anyway, which doesn't matter to me, but they're gonna wanna come in that day and want an inspection and they have to be signed off by me to do that. But the other issue is, I don't think, I think the year, I mean, they're gonna make money, is my opinion, either way.
I agree with you, $300 is really not that much.
We wanted you, it's, they brought it to me, and I know she went to Angie's.
She came to council last night.
Stuff on it.
Yeah.
It's back on you guys, what you guys wanna do. But I do know that the food trucks that are coming into this town, when they're buying the one, the year passed, they're making more than enough money off the town, because when you go to get in line for those food trucks, you're waiting and waiting and waiting.
So the fish one, it still come, does the fish, do they have a current one?
I think they, there's expired, I think in. Yeah, I think they, they expire like in June or July, I think, or something like that. But, I mean, they're making their money. I, I mean, I get that, you know, some of them don't wanna pay that, but to me, they're making more than $300 that night when they're charging what they're charging for some of the deals off of the trucks. I get it, but to me, I think it's in your guys' court. But like I said, I, I know that there are a lot of them that voice to me like, like, we actually make pretty good money to come down here, that's why we're here.
Well, can we move this to two weeks from now and have another committee meeting? Jen, if you can get back here in two weeks with your proposal for special events? And I'll let Jenny come in, she could speak on her own behalf and what her, what research she's done. There's just, she was here, like I said, two weeks ago and had asked. And she was planning on being here tonight and then something happened and she, something got called out of town or something, so. Okay, so we will table this for right now and plan on, if you can put that on the agenda for two weeks. Thank you. Okay, golf cart ordinance. Eric, you're here. Welcome, I didn't see you slide in.
Am I the only one that is concerned about having all of these golf carts, the side by sides, the e-bikes, the scooters on the streets? Like, do they have to have insurance on those things? Like, they get into an accident with a vehicle that they're covered?
I can't speak of scooters. I'm here to speak of golf carts.
Completely different thing. These electric scooters now, where you're running around, are gonna be an issue for us.
They're going up our streets, today one went right in front of me, about knocked me over when I was coming down the city off.
The go car, or golf carts, that are supposed to be licensed, there's supposed to have insurance, there's supposed to have lights. Can be somewhat challenging from time to time to figure out which ones are licensed, which ones aren't. But we're doing what we can to stop those as we see them. The side by sides, we have, the only control we have is Sharp Street and Locust Street and the county that can ride the main road in on them, but we have no control, otherwise gives them license to the county and the proof of custody. So.
And the golf cart, the reason this is on for tonight is because they do have to have lights to allow them to go in, to be able to, I mean, what's the purpose of them having lights if they can't drive them after dark? To get home.
Turn signals or seatbelts.
Don't they have turn signals though? They have to have, I know ours has turn signals.
They should have turn signals.
I think that's part of it.
Brake lights and headlights.
Turn signals are not included in the ordinance that we reviewed.
Well, we could update that when we update this for the time then, to update.
Technically, you don't have to have turn signals.
Oh, you don't?
No, you had to have.
I, seriously, it just makes me nervous, like, I have seen, like, those side by sides, I, I don't know. And just the safety, like, we're gonna feel really terrible for how much is the license, 25 bucks? When somebody gets, if they're in an accident of any kinds, it's gonna be bad. And there's no way that they only do 25 on the streets now.
Well, can some of the, golf carts can't go fast.
The site will be limited, but they can also have that taken off and.
Well, then they need, they need to get it. I don't see them, no.
But side by sides.
I saw one today.
Definitely.
But we can't, like you said, we can't control the side by sides.
Like those, like there's the, like the bigger.
The Rangers.
Like, Flares Rangers, those are good. I don't know.
I do think we need to start having the officers check on those golf carts they see driving around, because a lot of them have, you only have, I think, four that have done their permits.
We've done three today.
Today, you got three, okay. Because they're in our neighborhood all the time and I know that's not, they're putting up the sign, the orange, to show that they've.
The slow moving.
Slow moving vehicle. But they don't have a permit on it, they've not permitted them, so they need, we need to start watching that. Because I've had several neighbors.
If we were a blink and miss it kinda town, maybe, but to me, Loma just keeps getting busier and busier and busier with traffic and, I don't know. I just don't have a comfort level with having one more non-normal vehicle on the road after dark.
Because they're just asking for, you could even do until 10 o'clock or, or. The thing is, if they're driving to an event and it gets over, like, they go to the park, to the amphitheater, it's dark when it's over and then they're against the law because they can't go home. And that's why I'm asking if you'll consider changing the time.
I don't have an issue with it as long as they have lights, if they're licensed, the problem's.
Right, the problem is right now we have someone that don't, I don't have an issue with it.
I mean, don't get me wrong, you're not gonna catch me on one of those that like, but I don't wanna tell anybody else that, I don't wanna take that choice away from them.
So you're talking about golf carts?
I'm only talking about our golf carts. 10 o'clock at night?
Golf carts.
Well, Eric, I asked Eric, what time are you comfortable with? Do you care of a timeline?
I'm kinda in the opinion, if they have headlights and taillights like they're supposed to have, then.
It shouldn't matter a time.
So is there a time on it now?
No.
No.
Well, yeah, it does. It's just on set, they can't be on it, so we'd like to change that to either 10 or 11, so they're after an event, they can get home in the dark and not get pulled over.
How are you gonna prove the event? Is the event?
Well, it shouldn't even matter if they've got light, I mean, they're, they're in it.
They're on your side.
I'm just saying that's one of the reasons.
It's more of a, they are licensed and have the right lighting, are you okay?
One time we had a lot of golf cart license, people registering a license.
And now they're not.
Not as much now, I believe, because a lot of people have upgraded the side by sides.
Well, and then the state came in and said.
Well, that was on the side by sides.
That's on the side.
That was on the golf carts.
No.
Because we had the, they had to have the certain tires and they had, and we were collecting.
That's a side by side.
Or that or Larry's Rangers.
Was the side by sides when we had those licenses.
Or maybe, yeah, the UTE.
Yeah, because we had, Stan had to get new tires.
Because I was like, I remember when the state came back and we had to get in line with what the state then put down.
But that has nothing to do with golf carts.
So now the only thing I think our ordinance reads as far as side by sides go that we can control is Locust Street church.
Right, that's right.
Which is hard to control, because they'll come off a side street to go to the gas station and I personally have a problem with stopping and citing somebody who's on the block when they can go just as fast as a car in those things. They leave them outside of the city. But we don't have a lot of people run Locust Street or Sharp Street that I've seen. I know I got one guy that comes in for a PJ almost on a daily, usually turns on or whatever that way.
Are you talking about the side by sides? See, I thought they could be on Sharp and Locust.
Last time the ordinance says no.
That's the golf cart. It's the golf cart.
Golf carts can't, all right, golf carts is prohibited to be on those.
Are we sure on the other one?
You changed it.
You changed it to let them, when the state changed everything.
On the county, yeah, we changed that.
But I know we can't, golf carts are prohibited by.
Definitely not golf carts, side by sides can be on Sharp and Locust.
So.
Well, if you're to put a time on it, would, you don't care as long as they're licensed?
As long as they got the lights, I don't.
Be a good way to.
Quickly find out.
You'll find out who's, you'll find out who didn't permit their thing, for sure.
Well, part of the issue is gonna be, Donnie brings up, what event are, so if the event goes to one, what happens?
I don't think we're gonna make it an event.
And I don't think, I'm just saying that was an example given to me.
Right.
That they got pulled over because they were at an event at the park and then tried to go home.
Well, that's because it's in there, unless for a special event authorized by the city council and the operator possesses a valid permit.
Yeah, where is that?
Under number seven parks. I'm guessing that's probably where they're going.
Oh, no, that's within the city parks. They shall not be operated within city parks, another land owned by city unless there's a special event. But they can go.
Oh, I thought you said it was somebody coming from the amphitheater.
It was, but they can, it's like they can't drive in the park, is what that is, but. Well, we'll put this on in two weeks and come back with some suggestions for times and you guys can talk, if I think about it, for the next two weeks. And then see what you wanna do. What can we do about the scooters and stuff like that?
We'll start stopping, no kidding. The dilemma is, we're restricted on what we can do, what we're talking about.
But we do have an ordinance that can't be on the city park.
Return it to the parents.
Yeah.
It's, we're gonna have a lot of scooters go off.
Eric, can you help me though, because the way I understand it, obviously I don't understand everything at all. If they're on the street though, is it not written that they have to abide by the laws that are?
By traffic laws.
So we don't really need an ordinance to state.
They're on the sidewalks, though.
They're on the, they're on our sidewalks, is what I'm talking about.
So they don't have to have bicycles or scooters.
Right, right.
We already have ordinances in place to deal with that.
Right.
Typically, they don't cause too big of a problem. Now, these electric scooters that are just recently been popping up this year.
Zipping in and out in front of cars, yeah.
But that's on the road.
Yeah, that's on roads.
That's what I'm talking about.
Because a lot of those will run up to fifteen miles an hour or so, which is fairly fast.
Some is faster, I guess, just cause they're so small.
And that's all I'm focusing on here is this discussion of, I don't wanna put an ordinance on something when state law already dictates, if they blow through a stop sign, they just blew through a stop sign. That's, that's law.
I just think we need to start.
Don't disagree, but I can issue a citation to a seven or eight-year-old or a nine-year-old.
Oh, yeah.
If they're fourteen and older and have a permit and enter a driver's license, it's really easy to issue a citation.
And this is. This is me in my rose-colored world and my, I grew up here and this is. We wouldn't issue a citation to a seven-year-old anyway, right? We'd go home and we'd say, hey, Mary and Joe, I just caught Johnny blowing through a stop sign and this is your warning, if we do it again, X, Y, Z, now we've taken the scooter.
Is why we already have ordinances in place for scooters and bicycles. So, see, when they become a problem, we'll start to.
You have to start in for, yeah, forcing them on the sidewalks, that's a big problem with sidewalks.
So that already exists, correct?
Correct.
I've never seen them on the sidewalks, I just.
Oh, they're on our side, around the square all the time.
And on chess signs.
Zooming around, every day.
Road's too rough.
Oh, I don't disagree.
Well, move on.
No, cause they go up and down West Forks Loop all the time, on scooters, fast.
Well, and I just saw on the buzz where one zipped out, it must've been right here on the square, cause it said by the full stop that says light. And went right in front of traffic, but that was not it.
They did, they did, yeah. Somebody filmed them.
Filmed them, and scary, but it's no different than when we were kids. I mean, I think I said this last time we talked about, I flew through that high school stop sign at the bottom of Fourth Street. I don't know how many times on my bike, yeah, I'm lucky to be alive. But I should have gone.
Okay, uh, Mike and Donnie met with Ron and went through user agreements. You don't have them in front of you, really, there wasn't a whole lot of changes made from previous ones.
Not a lot.
Uh, but for, they kept it for seven fifty for everybody, for the most part. Soccer is only for the spring season, not for the fall, to accommodate them doing their own fertilizing and stuff, and they're good with that. One change on baseball, softball, as far as Ron can drag the fields on the day of a game, but not, can't drag them every day, doesn't have enough manpower because of mowing and stuff. Let's see. Coed softball league, the same as before, three hundred.
What'd you say, for the baseball fields?
That he would, he wants to just add that he will drag the fields on game days, on the fields that they're playing games on. If you have another discussion on that, I don't know, that's what he told me on the.
It is a lot of the days.
It used to be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, so those are game days.
Yeah.
Well, then he'll be doing it every day.
Every day, that's why I'm confused by.
Did he say that during your meeting then, two guys, when you met with him as far as dragging fields?
I don't remember that, no.
Okay. Well, apparently, is that one of the things Sean was concerned about, they're not, he's not dragging the fields?
Daily.
Daily, but they'll have to if they have games every day. Okay, okay. Uh, coed, the same as before, three hundred dollars. The adult volleyball, coed volleyball, or whatever it is, that was down at K Creek when they were living down south, they're taking, they're gonna come back to the city. I'm trying to find the previous agreement. I don't know if you guys want to do it per person or per team. I know K Creek did per team, cause I asked Randy, uh, but we're gonna look for that one, so I'll be back in a couple of weeks on that one.
How do we do with the softball? That was per.
It was just the three hundred for the season.
That was for the season.
Cause they just use it, yeah, yeah. And they start later, she's gonna give me the dates, but it doesn't start till, so I'm like, they're not even playing yet, so they're not.
Yeah, no.
It's just.
And they only play on Sundays.
Sundays for a couple of months, I think, July and this, yes.
Sand volleyball would be the same.
I was just trying to come up with some consistency there. And I'm gonna leave it pretty close to that what I bring back to you in a couple of weeks, I just giving you a rundown of what I'm trying to find, but that was brought to my attention, that volleyball, we need to add them. Southwest Iowa Pickleball, I asked them, they don't, I know you guys came up with, uh, if they clo, if they need to close the courts for a tournament, would be a hundred dollars, fifty for a fundraiser. I did talk to them, they, they, there's never a time that they'll ever close. They'll always leave at least something open and so it'll be in there for them if they decide they need it for a weekend tournament or something where they have to pay. But then that also means we would have to be, get another court potty or something for them, but otherwise, it's pretty much what they had, what they do, they maintain the courts of debris, they do the caulking of the fence. They do a lot of work on that, that they do and take care of the, uh, the nets and the straps and the wind screens and all of that. And then, uh, the city would see fertilizer, trim grass, maintain pretty much the same as before. So really, the only thing we added on that to show them is if they needed, if they wanted to close and have control.
Is the grass thing in there now? Or is the grass up to the pickleball?
The, it's just around them, that Ron will mow the lawn, basically, their outside area that they mow. The city, it's just a small area behind the outfield of the softball and then it's mostly gravel. Most of it is on their side, there is some grass on the fenced area for softball and then, um. Yeah, yeah. Yep.
One other change was specifically mentioning that the city keeps the key to it.
And that's the thing I added on there, that you'll see on the next, when we come back in a couple of weeks, that the city will maintain the keys and unlock the courts at the beginning of spring and the beginning of winter. Because we do wanna close it because of the cost of, we don't want them getting trashed during the winter months and people driving their bikes or sliding or anything on it, so. I, unless you have a problem with that.
I just have a question on, how are they gonna hold a tournament and not close it?
They just, you know, they have that game time that they, people sign up, that's how they get utilized anyway. But they only utilize two to three court, whatever, they leave courts open, they don't ever book it the whole thing, cause it is open to the public. So they're really not.
So if there was a.
But if they decided they wanted a tournament, these guys are putting it in there. If you really wanna close it, this is what's gonna cost them.
You know, we were asking, you think extraordinary themselves.
So it's. And I'm gonna share this with them, with what those guys came up with and see if they have any, and then they can come to the next meeting, as well, everybody will be invited to come next time with them.
Yeah, cause I've just, based on the experience with them in the past, and when they've done things, like, I can't imagine them, we're gonna reserve one court, but if somebody were to walk up and say, we wanna play, that they're not gonna say.
No, they'll be open.
Having a tournament.
No, no, they won't, they'll, their tournaments, they, they've had tournaments, but they've never closed, they've never had to close it, they leave it open for the people that walk in and stuff.
What about Little Rams?
The seven fifty, or per player again, just regular, and then.
Did anything change in their agreement as far as the field and taking care of the field and spraying and all that? I know that was a conversation.
Right, I think we're spraying it, and then, and Ron worked that out with them, I think. Didn't Ron, the Little Rams guy, Mitch, didn't Ron?
Yeah.
So we're gonna charge them the same and they're gonna take on more.
I don't know about all that.
No.
I was talking about, just for this year, they came to an agreement, um, Ron went out and sprayed it, but the Little Rams guy wanted to fertilize it. Little Rams told me to fertilize it with the field and seed, seed.
Well, they'll have to come to that agreement then. We'll have to have them, just, those two will have to.
What did they decide to do this year?
That Ron was gonna spray it.
Yep, and they did.
And they did, and that's what I have on here, that he was gonna spray it. So if they wanna do something different, they'll have to come in and ask if they want to change it for next year.
Yeah.
This is for this year. Okay. And same with the buy, they're good on all, they've already asked for an invoice, but that's it on those. So more coming in a few weeks, just wanted to give you a heads up on that. Public Works, pool questions, I'm done with my discussion, anybody who wants to do pool? Jake, you're standing up.
Jake's packing up, he's like, I am out of here tonight.
We have a, also have a discussion in the main council meeting for the pool stuff.
Yeah, so you don't have to do it, there'll be enough on accident, I guess.
Really, the only update we have is we're still pushing Burback to get a final report. I think part of it will up is they're trying to get a cost estimate together for their recommendations. If that's rip it all out and restart, we at least have to have a number or two, two put to their recommendation. And that's on a quick turnaround, we're trying to get contractors involved and stuff like that, so. Midge and I reached back out yesterday, I have not heard anything yet.
Okay.
Um, so hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have a final report, everything documented, everything pulled together. They did send over a big file of everything we've received so far and documentation and stuff, just not the final report. So, kind of the biggest discussion tonight is, do we open this year, do we not? Um, I'll leave it up to you guys, I'm here to help.
And there's an action item down, further down, so.
Here to help answer questions, balance things off of, like I said, I'm no pool expert, but I'm here to help as needed, so.
Is there an option to put like a liner in that pool?
We're evaluating every option we can at this point.
That's right.
Burback's looking at some stuff, I've had some feelers out with some other companies that.
Okay.
Um, there's gonna be a fan following along, um, that may have some alternative stuff. Um, and I wouldn't say Burback's gonna have the right answer or the only answer, but we wanna make sure that you guys have the most information tonight.
Sure, okay.
I think the Burback report was very important, showing why it's not working. Uh, and now we have official documentation, that's from someone that does that every day. I think that was the first step for you guys to understand why, why it's failing the way it is. Next step will be is how do we fix it, or can we fix it, and to what extent? Um, and those are the pieces that hopefully will have some different ideas between Burback, between, if I can come up with something, um, a lot of different companies have reached out just saying, hey, what about this, what about that, but so we have some hard information.
Things will take time. And that's something that we, we want to rush.
Or extend it, yeah, right.
But where are we with legal action? Granted, we need all the answers, like, I get all of that, but I, how can we be? We were talking about it four years ago.
Because we need all the reports and stuff before we can do the next step.
That's what I'm saying, I know that we need the final. But are we reaching out to find out who we need to talk to and what they would need to analyze it and all of that?
Midge and I started to pull some of the documents that they said they would need to go ahead and start that discussion. Agreements, stuff like that, so, I mean, we're finding pieces all over between the box that I had, between the files that Mitch gave me to go through, I mean, it's, unfortunately, it's not just laying all in one spot, so we've started, we have started to collect those. I know Midge has had some initial feelers, do some people that might be interested in helping with that, I've done that before. Um, Matt Woods's recommendation was to kind of get everything ducks in a row and have it all readily accessible before we move forward with any of that, and that final piece will be that report that we're waiting on, so. I think the lead word will be done, it's just, you guys will have to make that final decision and move forward. And we wanna make sure we have everything ready to go, easily accessible when they do request it.
And do we have more than one name or a referral for who might be the best if we decided to pursue it?
I have a referral from another city administrator and I've been checking that and, um, they have experience.
That one that we talked to, that one we met from?
Yeah, they have experience with municipalities, so they're familiar with, um, city codes and, um, they also have experience with, um, construction litigation, so they're familiar with cities and construction litigation. And I can ask Matt Woods if he has any recommendations too, or.
Well, I'm happy to research. I said I'm happy to do some research as well.
Yeah, I'm happy, I'm the person that I've reached out, how to see if we want different quotes or prices.
I would also ask the question at a time is what's that, what is that gonna cost for them representing, whatever it may be? Just to build that in your guys' overall picture when you're making that decision. If we can find an alternative that's reasonable, and I don't know what that is yet, um, maybe it makes sense to not go that route and put that money towards something else, but hopefully have some movement for any of yours soon.
Okay. Other questions?
You know what I'm gonna ask? Open for next week, we get both contractors out here to look at both manholes, the cracked ceiling. It's been really fun trying to wrangle them all together, so, yes, I've made contact, yes, it's in the works. I knew that's up tonight, so no, we're, Western is trying to do this, uh.
I ask every time I see you.
Please do, hold me to that, no, we'll, we'll get that taken care of. Um, I'll go through the rest of my stuff here, just, since we have a little bit of time to fill. Um, chess got just about done, I don't know if you guys are driven back there, it looks a lot better there.
I have been, riding by it, looks a lot better.
Um, they're working on trying to get all cleaned up here the next couple of days, um, I don't know where the concrete will be poured yet, but it's coming. Um, I believe we're right at budget, not a little under budget on that. Um, we tried to put the geological peers that we talked about, we hit all kinds of front rubble and so they ended up actually just doing the concrete bags, which we talked about, and then rip wrapping over the top, which should hold in place even better. So I think the only add we had was a little bit of rip wrap and one extra bend to make things coming in a little easier. Um, but I don't have to spend any additional major cost at all on that one, which is great. Um, I expect to potentially start to close that one out at the next meeting with the payout, start the thirty-day process and retainage and all that stuff. So that one's worked out pretty well. Um, we did have a pre-con last week for the asphalt street project, they're looking at mid-June to come in and start the concrete portion, the curving gutter, the sidewalks, the prep portion. Um, and they thought that would take three weeks, I'm guessing it'll take a month with the holiday in there. Um, and then they'll follow up with the asphalt portion, the milling and overlay on that. So that, that is mid-June. Um, the third one then would be the Sharp Street. Uh, they're not allowed to start till for June second, we haven't had a pre-con on that yet. Um, that'll be done sometime this summer, I'm guessing that'll be a week project, they'll rip it all out, they'll put it all back, it'll be a pretty quick one.
What was that project?
The Sharp Street, um, up at the school. So there'll be a lot of action here, I would guess, mid-June, uh, into July, uh, with everybody going, so. We talked about the pre-con, making sure we get all the residents up in the Florence area, those major residential areas, plenty of, you know, heads up. We'll get a figure together, we'll go door-to-door on a lot of them. Luckily, it's not going to be take the entire road out of, you know, movement. The curving gutter will take, you know, one lane may be closed for a couple of days while they do it. And then the asphalt, the milling, they'll do it all in one day, it may sit for a week and then they'll come back and do all the, the overlay at the same time, so. Then maybe the inconvenience, not be able to get there for a couple of hours, but you can drive in the asphalt later that day once it's fully, so. Um, Sharp Street will be a little bit different, they'll tear the whole thing down, there's only, I think, four areas, four people that are impacted, rather than have to park a block town. Um, but we'd rather tear it all and do it all at once, that way you get a better product and have it closed for a short time than doing sections or trying to do temporary access. doing sections or trying to do temporary access or something like that, so. Questions? It's summer.
Yes, it is.
Things will start moving quickly, so.
Okay, all right.
I believe that's everything I had to ask you guys.
Got a 10-minute break, everybody, if you want to mute, just tell, you start over at 10. All right, your second's off after.
I call the meeting to order. Invite everybody to stand and say the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'll ask clerk to take roll call, please. Kate?
Here.
Smithers?
Here.
Ryan?
McEwen?
Here.
Line?
Okay, ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed. So moved, Smithers? Second?
Kate?
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Smithers? Yes. Kate?
Yes.
McEwen? Yes. Line?
Yes.
At this time, we allow visitors to address council that are not on the agenda. We allow you to, up to, limited to three minutes per the Iowa open meeting law. So if there's anybody that would like to address council, please come forward. State your name. Okay. Seeing no one, we'll move on to item five. Life-saving awards from the school track event. Matt Gray, you're...
On April 8, 2025, there was a student athlete that was running the track meet and suffered cardiac arrest. AED was applied, CPR had been started, and we traced it forward that individual positive outcome. I'd like to recognize all the school staff and other people that were assisting in the track meet for their performance that day and basically saving this person's life. If you guys would all like to come up here, I've got some certificates for you. Your actions on Tuesday, April 8, 2025. While being president of the school track meet, you responded to assist a student athlete in cardiac arrest. CPR was initiated and AED was applying, the shock was given. The student was transported to the hospital and battling your composure, awareness, and immediate action directly contributed to the favorable outcome of this student athlete on this day. You are commended for your actions and with gratitude to the Golden Fire Department for this award. Bob, use it.
Bob, you want to just stand over here?
Sure. Do they have any swords and machine gun? All right. Tristan Meyer? All right. Jennifer Hughes? And we also have Ethel Vax? Chip Adams? Ashley Neeson? Naomi Sharp? And also Maggie Arnold.
Matt, do you want to stand with me too?
Chase was actually the responding medic that responded and worked on an individual. Oh, you want to get high?
I'm going to get up behind. Thanks, thank you guys, thank you. Ryan, I think we have enough kids on this student issue, is okay after all this? Is that, can you be down to student?
Yeah, please.
Is home okay?
I wanted to say one thing. We made, Jennifer, one of the kids made that call at 5:25, 9:01, and by 5:30, EMT was on-site and on-field. So five-minute response time from our local fire department as well.
That's outstanding, yeah.
Thank you, you guys.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Jeff, do you have organs?
Yep.
Please.
Chip?
All right. Okay, we're ready. Moving on to committee reports, we'll start with park and reps. Who's up for that?
Finalizing this year's user agreements for the sports clubs. And next meeting, we hope to have reps from most of the clubs here to go over those and make sure we agree to any changes. So hopefully have those finished up the next meeting.
Yep, I'm on that two weeks. Okay, is that it for park and reps?
Yes.
Okay, and then for public works, that would be for the pool, those public works.
Are we going to wait to discuss that with the Aquatic Center motion?
We can do that if you want to, or you can just do a quick summary of what Jake said, it's up to you.
Well, basically, it's what we talked about last time. We're still, we're waiting on the Burbak, the people that come in and done the inspection of the pool to get the final report back. We've contacted a few people about possible fixes, something to maybe move us forward. But until we get that final report back and work our way through it, that's basically where we're at.
Okay, admin. Who's doing admin?
I can take that. We had two topics. We were discussing food trucks. We already have an ordinance in existence. It's come to our attention that there may be a need for a change or considering for special events. So we're going to have that back on the agenda in two weeks to discuss further. And then we've also had it brought to consider, right now golf carts cannot be on any city streets after dusk, basically. We're looking at if they're licensed and they have lights, extending that out to possibly 10 or 11 o'clock. No decision made on that. It will be on the agenda again in two weeks.
Okay, thank you. I believe that's everything. So we'll move on to item seven, Eagle Engineering for the Aquatic Center. Back up here, Jake.
Yeah, that kind of fell in her mind, but Donnie kind of gave a quick summary. Really, I think at this point, it's up to you guys to decide whether or not to try to open the pool this year, not open the pool. We're not going to have any major answers or costs until we get that report and we kind of formulate a path forward. That's up to you guys. My recommendation is probably not to do it this year. Yes, it's a loss to the city, but I think it's also going to save long-term. I don't really want what we've discovered to change if we have to do anything else with that report, it would be the other part of it. So if we were to fill it this year and cause further damage, how does that impact anything if you guys decide to move a little bit later? So something to take into account is probably up to you guys is, tour and Burbak did go through, we're not going to have a here. We're not going to have a play feature if you guys do choose to open. So isn't worth it to open. Other thoughts I kind of had driving down here is, can we get lifeguards at this point still? What's it going to cost in chemicals because we're losing so much water and need to add those chemicals? So there's other costs that go into that than just water loss or things like that. So here to help answer any questions, until we have better answers, that's kind of where I sit when they enter.
Thanks, Jake.
Of course.
So I'm going to ask for a motion, one or way or the other, if anybody'd like to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to close the Glenwood Pool for this season, for the 2025 season.
Is there a second?
Lines?
Any further discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Lines?
Yes.
McEwen? Yes. Kate?
Yes.
Smithers?
Once we have more, we'll sit down and talk.
More to come. All right.
Any other questions?
Jake, thank you.
Thank you.
Is Michelle right here for Healy? There you are, I didn't see you come in.
Sorry, I was stuck in the back, you know, while we were busy. So we continue to work on our improvement plan for Healy Park, and I am proud to say we have so far raised 147,000 of the 187,000 we need. So I am here to ask for permission and a motion to apply for $40,000 from Mid-American Energy, $40,000 from First Interstate Bank, $40,000 from the Rod Roden Foundation, and $25,000 from Black Hills Energy, hoping that with all of that big number, we can get 40,000 for fundraising.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to grant permission for her to apply for all those lovely grants.
So moved, McEwen?
Second?
Smithers?
Any other questions or discussion?
What was the third one?
First Interstate Bank?
Nope.
Rod Roden.
Rod Roden, thank you.
I couldn't remember what order I put them in. I get to put you in.
Clearly, I didn't write it down right then. I had number four. Okay. Roll call, please.
Lines?
Yes.
Smithers? Yes. McEwen? Yes. Kate?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Good luck.
Keep you.
Thank you for everything you're doing on that.
Thank you for all you're doing, Michelle.
We appreciate that.
It is probably regardless of whether we get any of these, we're not going to be 2026 before we can start construction. Which makes me sad, but we're still moving forward.
Yeah, okay, good luck. All right, next on the agenda, Brandon Olson is here. Come on up, Brandon.
Hello, fellow members of 811?
Hello.
Good evening.
Probably everybody as well. About three weeks ago, I received a notice of abatement for planting some trees in between the sidewalk and the roadside of my property. I elected to call 811 ahead of time.
You did not call 811?
Ahead of time, no, I did not before I planned it. I did to the best of my ability to strategically place them in line with the trees. I received the notice and then right after I had called and set up 811 to come out, and they did the witching and the marking and cleared any of the hazards that were of concern. Having the chance to speak with multiple crew members that had come out from Black Hills and a couple of the other representatives and had asked them about the dusha trees, arborvitus, that I had planted. And all had said they don't see any risk of the root systems having any issues with infrastructure.
What type of trees was it?
I would very much so like to keep them in place with, after 811 being called and then giving me a little bit more reassurance that the trees should not be an issue. I'm not opposed to moving them if need be, however, with the due diligence and the reassurance from people that are in the network of the sewer line, the water line, the gas line, and confirming to the best of their knowledge that they would not provide any hazards. That's all I have on it.
Okay. Did they give you something in writing? Or do you know who you talked to at each of those?
I did not write down any names. However, there's a printout on the sheet with all of the marked and cleared statuses from each of those companies that came out.
And these are planted in the right-of-way then?
Correct. What's deemed as the parking ordinance 151.1.
Yep, yep, okay. Matt, do you want to comment or we want to take this?
GMU's the one that reached out to me because it's right above their, basically, their sewer line.
Their sewer line?
Yep, and they're the ones that reached out to me and wanted to know if we had a ordinance. And I'm like, yeah, we do, and then that's why I served.
Okay.
After they had come out and marked and the flags are still in place, the positioning of the said trees of concern, there is no sewer line in that part of the right-of-way. They are, I have pictures of the trees and measurements away from the nearest water lines and sewage line and based off of the references that I pulled from a lot of different resources of the characteristics of those trees and their root systems, the fibrous root system that those trees are, do not pose a threat to update infrastructure. And again, just having the reassurance of the people that came out to mark lines and knowing that, and that was the main concern, I believe, is the sewer line. And the sewer line, which I believe normally goes through that right-of-way in between the sidewalk and park, well, actually runs along K Creek, which is in my backyard.
Well, we can take it under advisement, and in two weeks, they can have an action item on as far as what's decided. Mitch, any comment? Matt, is that acceptable?
Because there's no action item on here.
The root system gets no more than 15 feet wide, but they grow deep and not spread out. The tree itself will be about 15 feet in diameter.
Did you, did you say that there is or isn't an existing sewer line?
There is not.
There is not?
Well, they're short marked.
Is there a storm line that runs down that side of the property?
No.
What was that, say, which one's?
No.
One, two, three.
Water is...
Oh, no.
It's on the side.
Is there a storm drain on his side?
But it's, you know, it'll go across the street.
Oh, oh, they come in and just go across, okay, okay.
Again, I do want to apologize for jumping the gun on planting before calling 811. I didn't understand that is protocol. And I just kind of tried to give a...
We all get excited, we all... What's your reasoning for planting those? What's your, why did you do it?
Mainly protection from the three-way stop that is right there. It's not a three-way stop, you have the one-stop sign and then I'm right at the edge of the, where the bridge and the millhouse are, the storehouse or other. Protection from road noise, privacy, from light intrusion from the commercial buildings that do surround the area. Protection from the dust that does pick up and blow from the concrete facility right down the road. But ultimately to provide shade and protection for pedestrians that do frequent that sidewalk right there. And beautification of my...
Are these a type of pine tree then?
They're considered evergreen.
Evergreen is, yeah, they're green. Actually states no evergreens planted between back of curb and sidewalk.
No evergreen, okay.
I think that's because it gets so wide.
So it could go out on the street?
That much room between sidewalk and...
On the side, yep.
The distance between the parking right-of-way, they will fill out that area. However, with the maximum distance of the diameter should not, so should not touch the edge of sidewalk or fall into the street. In the need be, I intend on maintaining and cutting back and just making sure that there's no obstructions or pedestrians trying to cross the street or... Yeah, I have full intention of maintaining if I...
Are you available to come back in two weeks? Or just take it under advisement and do some research? Jamie, work with that.
I don't remember if you said, how many did you plant?
There's a total of five.
Five?
And how much distance is between them?
They have five, 10 feet in between each of them. Do have them staggered, so five feet between these two and then five feet between one that staggered. It's meant to build a hedge for privacy, for protection, for blocking blockage. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Cheryl Evans, are you here? No Cheryl Evans? Do you see Cheryl?
No.
Not here? Okay. So we'll move on to departmental reports. Is Tara not here tonight?
Tara is ill, but she did want me to read.
Okay, we're going to listen to, Danny's going to read something from Tara.
She just wanted me to let you guys know that email was successfully transitioned on April 30th, and that was the last day she was able to do it.
Done, very good. No Mike Collins, no Ron Maddox. Jamie, you're up.
Jim and I did interviews a week ago, week and a half ago. I would like to make a, have a motion to approve hiring Ethan Fisher for Street 301 at the union rate of $22.50 per hour, a starting date of...
May 19. May 19? Has he done the background checks and all that?
He's done the background, but we're waiting to hear back on the...
So pending the background?
No, on the drug test.
Okay, so if there's a motion, you'll say pending the results of drug tests.
So moved, pending the results of drug tests.
Thank you, Lori. Second?
Lines?
You decide, Danny.
Line, I'll hit.
All right. Any further discussions or questions? Roll call, please.
Kate?
Yes.
Smithers? Yes. Lines?
Yes.
McEwen? Yes.
Okay, anything else?
All three of the new speed signs were up last week. We also received our new pickup last week.
How's it driving? Are you driving it?
We drove it down here and it's sitting in the belly.
And so it, okay, you can all look at it on your way out.
Put some stuff, just put a box liner on it.
Okay, very good.
I got the title for it today.
Oh, excellent, it did come out. Okay, so let's hope this were yours. Anything else? Okay, Eric, you're next.
Well, speed signs up, I'm looking to get access to the data.
Okay.
I'm sure we've worked through that. I did issue a letter of commendation to Officer Cameron for his performance on a welfare check on a elderly couple. Their family does not live long, or have trouble getting home. Turns out they're involved in a car accident and physical therapy, there's a facility, and we tracked that down, which really went above and beyond the normal welfare check to do so. With that, completed a policy on the security and LPR cameras, which I believe is in the packet. I also completed a policy on the driver's safety class that we're looking to reform, which I'm hoping will be on the next agenda. At least some sort of resolution to set the fee for the class. We're looking to go ahead and do a demo class, just as kind of the trial run. So we're probably going to take the strength to have that done. If you know anybody that's interested in that.
Are you looking for teenagers to join? Yes.
Teenagers would probably be the best, but anybody with a knowledge of this, so. With that, we've had some of the rest since last meeting and 248 calls for service.
Did you just say 248 calls for service?
Yes, no, that would be all calls for service, that's whether they're complaining about a dog, scooter, or what would that be?
Is that higher than normal? Are doing a sign first? Okay.
Maybe your inflection tonight made it sound real high, I was like, what?
Other than that, they're still waiting for the cameras to arrive.
Okay, is council ready to make a motion on chapter 89 security of the LPR camera? I know, I only...
That's something I did assume that you went over with Matt.
I didn't hear back from Matt. I did send it to Mitch and I believe it's pretty solid.
Yeah.
Kind of limits some of our other camera policies within the police department, so. This was the guidelines that they're for official use.
Official use?
Yeah.
Okay, motion?
So moved, Lines?
Do we have a second?
Kate?
Any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
McEwen? Yes. Lines?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Smithers? Yes.
Anything else? You're good. Matt Gray, you're next.
Since last council meeting, our department responded to 57 incidents. One of the incidents, last Friday, we ended up having to take the boat out and our car was ordered out from One Creek. We went out, we located the car and had a dive team come out and we got them out. Basically, a car had been stolen and had been in the lake for a long time. So we did have that and then also several other fire EMS calls as well. EMS week starts May 18th through the 24th. You have a letter that will be going to the opinion tribune there, it'll also be put in a picture for the paper. I did put that copy of that letter up there, I'm going to go ahead and read it right now. It says, "It's EMS week honoring hometown heroes to the editor." National EMS week, May 18th through 24th this year is a time to recognize and honor essential services EMS professionals provide to their communities nationwide. This year's theme is "We Care For Everyone," which reflects the heart of what we do. We service a safety net for every member of our community and surrounding communities, regardless of age, background, or circumstances, because everyone deserves help in their nearest moment of need. At Golden Fire Department, our dedicated team of firefighter EMTs and firefighter paramedics proudly serve the city of Glenwood and surrounding area residents. A bed of 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, our team responds to, responded to 1,529 calls for service last year ranging from fires, heart attacks, strokes, traumatic injuries, and other emergencies. Our efforts extended beyond emergency responses. We also partner with Southwest Iowa Community College to provide CPR training and life-saving education, equipping people with skills to respond confidently in critical moments. Recently, the importance of having... Recently, the importance of having full-trained responders and the importance of EMS in our community happened when a student-athlete collapsed at the sport complex and CPR was started and the ABD was used. Our crew arrived and began treating the patient and fielding and protecting his airway and transporting the boss. Thanks to those citizens of the track that responded in the continued advance of care, which provided during transport, there was a positive outcome. Take a minute to ask yourself what would have happened if we did not have the services that Fire Department provides. EMS Week is a week of recognition and show support to all the organizations that provide services, but it should be supported every day. And here's how you can ensure that organizations have the funding, training, and personnel to respond to the calls. It can be done by advocating for resources and recognition they deserve every day at local, state, and federal levels. We urge our community to contact local, state, federal representatives to support legislation that would strengthen EMS operations, help us keep to a revised level of care. This National EMS Week lets us move beyond appreciative and take meaningful steps to ensure our professionals have the tools and support they need to save lives. Now we can go into the team that also can person on Facebook as well.
Thank you, Matt.
Also, um, Memorial Day weekend, we will be getting in the burn trailer and several other training drops. We usually put those down at the city field and train with them there. Um, it was the only time that we could get them. Um, so we will be doing some training down there like we have in years past. As of, uh, Saturday, I will be traveling to Des Moines to the Iowa EMS, uh, memorial. Uh, they're gonna be putting Assistant Chief Ray's name on the memorial, so I'll be going out there for that cemetery ceremony as well. Also, during the past week, I, uh, last week I went and visited the site where I'm in the ambulance and doing both. I was very impressed with the whole organization as all of its building, our ambulance. Uh, the company takes pride, they're a family oriented company, they treat their employees very well and all of the ambulances. Um, I was very impressed with the whole overall outward operations of it. Our squad looked really well. Um, it was trucked up to Lincoln, uh, the day after I left, and they are putting the finishes and touches on installing power cut, and then it will be going to show off at the Nebraska Fire School. Very impressed, it's a company that I wish we had in our town. It shows small-town pride and commitment and just the overall quality of the product that they built, you can tell the employees take pride in it. For COVID portion, I got several abatement notices that are going out. I got, uh, found a couple of driveway, a driveway that was forward to Deckel Building in front of a house and availability permits, so we've got one of those taken care of. I got a few others later, letters are going out for some property conditions. And Dollar General finally was able to make a breakthrough with that. The, uh, guy that owns the property called me today after trying to track him down. And, uh, through working with Dollar General's general managers and their higher-ups, um, he is saying that within three weeks, uh, that Matt Foose and his crew will be down there to rip that up and repair that. So it's taken a while, some phone calls, letters, and letters of return and things like that, so. I try to keep at all these people, but sometimes it's just, uh, like leaving my haystack because some of them don't live here.
Thank you. And they don't, yeah, so your persistence, it's paying off. Three weeks on my calendar.
And then also on the agenda I do have on there about the grass and weeds, I've given you guys a couple of ordinances and articles. I'm saying I would like to see the recommendation height of eight inches line that we need to put in our.
Eight inches?
Yes. Most of them are anywhere from six to 10, but eight seems to be the common denominator. Every year I had people say, well, what's the height limit? We don't have one in there, and I think it needs to be just put in there and they can go out and survey.
Should it be ordinance or resolution? State's resolution, but is that in it?
Uh, we need to update the whole, probably the whole ordinance would be my thing.
Okay.
Make sure that we're in line with it. Um, because I see a lot of people that, some of them don't care, but let throw a yard throw, I mean, it is what it is. But I think eight inches is plenty of height, because you start getting over that, a lot of these mowers, push mowers can't make it through it, and they're not gonna mow the yard.
Is that what most towns have, eight inches, or do they?
Anywhere from six to eight inches.
Six to eight?
Yep, and I attached all these, there's a packet up there with some different articles and what some of the other towns are doing with this.
Oh, for grass and weeds, yep.
So.
Tell me, Matt, sorry, as I'm thinking through it, at eight inches, they would get a letter that basically just says you need to mow.
Seven days to mow your yard, if you don't do it, we're gonna do it for you.
So they would get the letter at eight inches, which by the time they got it mowed, it'd be at 10 inches, right? Okay. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't one goes at eight, and then we're out there in two days, not giving them, I mean, I knew that wasn't the case.
I've got one of these, he's had mowing issues and I, I talked to him, he said he's gonna mow it, it's still not mowed, so tomorrow I'm certain he can look at the letter. And his is taller than that. And he keeps telling me he's coming to mow the yard and he has not yet, so it's time to draw a letter, and then if he does not mow it, then get it mowed and we'll cite him for it.
And, and this one does say like eight inches or that creates a health, safety, or fire hazard, so it could be six or seven inches, you can still address it if it's causing issues.
You're looking at, uh, where they're located as well, are they gonna have farms that are gonna be running out in the old roads and we're gonna swerve?
Mm-hmm.
Or do you have somebody that's gonna throw a cigarette out and catch the bank on fire? There's a lot of various different variables in there. Like, some of it, um, I think some of them are out, really, they need help, and I try to give them as much time and try to refer them to somebody that may be able to help them, but some of them just refuse to mow the yard.
Yeah, that's where my head is at. I think there are some that just, that it's like, how do we, is this like, I don't know as a city, like, how do we get groups to help those people that either for medical reasons or age or just struggling, like, how do we help them?
Stuff like that, we have the, the Jenny Foundation, it's committed, we've actually got a community person starting this next week or so, and they'll be around to help you with that, we usually refer all them in for that. But sometimes they can actually find them assistance with some of this stuff too. So it's actually a very good partnership.
Yeah. So tonight you're just asking permission to start updating the ordinance?
Yeah, starting updating it.
So if you're all okay with that, we don't need a motion, just let them bring back something to us?
Yep.
Okay.
Are you just saying all properties, or are you calling out specifically residential versus commercial?
I would say all properties. I'm just, if you're between the two, because then we'll start doing that.
I was just thinking, seeing what you want, or what you were recommending.
Yeah, bring back something to them, they can do. Thank you. Okay, anything else? Are you done, Matt? Is he done? Mitch, you're up.
Um, I'm looking for a resolution, a, a motion to approve resolution, um, 3713 to approve FY 25 transfers. Iowa Code requires the city council to approve, uh, transfers, um, of dollars between any funds, and so this is just approving all the transfers, um, that we need to do in the FY 25 budget. You have any questions on any of the individual transfers? I'm willing to answer those now, if not, looking for a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved, Smithers? Second?
McEwen?
Any questions or discussion? Roll call please.
Smithers?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Lines?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
I'm looking for the same thing for FY 26 transfers for next year. Motion to approve resolution 3711.
So moved, McEwen?
Second?
Lines?
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Smithers?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Lines?
Yes.
All right, included in your bracket was the April financial report. Um, if you have any questions on that, I'm willing to take those now and look into them. If not, um, you can always email me later and I'm willing to look into anything, any questions you have. And besides that, it's been a busy week working on all these, uh, other resolutions that we have coming up, so. And looking into the pool and other, other things that have come up, so.
Yeah. You thought it slowed down after budget was done, didn't you?
No, it's getting faster.
Getting faster, absolutely.
So with that, item 12, uh, resolution 3714 to set a date for a public hearing on designation of the 2025 GRC redevelopment urban renewal area and on urban renewal plan and project. So this sets a required public hearing before we can create an urban renewal district that encompasses the, um, GRC area. Once an urban renewal district is created, it will allow the city to set up, um, TIF districts, um, in the future to help with the development if needed. We were asked to create this, um, urban renewal district by the, um, Glenwood Redevelopment Corporation, that's, um, handling the GRC area. After you, if you approve this, um, there's a few other steps that we need to go through, so then I'll need to work with the, uh, GRC group to finalize the plan. We just have to describe how the area is blighted. Um, we want to get the plan approved now while, um, there are the abandoned buildings with asbestos and don't have utilities running to them, as it's easier to declare the area blighted, and that gives you some, um, benefits with the TIF, um, law, there's more flexibility that you can use funds for. So I have some things to work on with them for that, and then there will be an invitation that I'll need to send out to representatives from the county and the, uh, and the school, um, to have a consultation on the urban renewal district, and then I also need to work with Matt to set up a meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission to review the plan, and then they will make a, um, they will provide any comments to you, um, at the June 10th meeting, where at the June 10th meeting, we'll have the public hearing and then also, adopt a plan. So this is the first steps to being able to use the, um, tax increment financing possibly in the future if, um, a developer were to come in there and want to work with the city.
So is there a motion for this?
Yeah, so this is just setting a public hearing.
Just for the public hearing, you're not proven anything yet?
So moved, Kate's.
Second?
Smithers?
Mike can add it. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
McEwen?
Yes.
Lines?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
You said that's June 10th, Mitch? June 10. Yep, yep.
I believe I am out of town for that one, I would not be able to call in.
Okay.
Just in that one. I am also out of town on Monday. We'll have to see.
Hopefully we're gonna attend.
We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to see if it's a super majority or anything too.
I don't think it is.
I don't think there's anything for that.
I might be able to call in if needed.
That would be fine.
Okay. I don't think I can, but I can see how it will be done.
Check in with everybody else's calendar, okay?
Um, the next item, resolution 3715, is in reference to our current, uh, local option sales tax. Um, this is for our local option sales tax election proceedings to expand the purpose statement, um, to include, include police, fire, and any lawful purpose. So the resolution directs the county to add to the November election question for city voters to expand the use of our local option sales tax, um, or keep it the same. It's not the new tax, this tax is already in place, um, and voting no on the, um, in the November election would just keep everything the same as we have it now. So the current use of the local option sales tax is 100% for the Mills County Wellness Center, which is the YMCA and the pool. And we use a large chunk of this funding to pay off the debt on the pool currently. And Glenwood is rather unique in that we have such a specific and limiting purpose for our local option sales tax funding. Most cities that have a local option sales tax have much broader uses and more flexibility with the funding. And so we are asking voters to expand the permissible use to include, um, the current use, um, plus the police department, fire department, and any lawful purpose as needed and determined by city council, um, to help the city fund, um, essential services. So at the beginning of FY 2025, we had over 1.8 million in this fund, and we collect around 680,000 a year, so some flexibility with the funding would be helpful to the city to continue to provide essential services like police and fire. So looking for a motion to approve.
So moved, Smithers?
Second?
Lines?
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Lines?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, the next one is resolution 3716, setting a date for a public hearing to renew the gas franchise ordinance with Black Hills Energy. So Black Hills Energy contacted us because their franchise is about to be up after 25 years, and the process for this, uh, franchise is, um, we set this hearing and we do a first reading tonight, and then at the next meeting, we will do a second reading of the ordinance and hold a public hearing, and if there are no objections at that time, we will waive the third reading and vote on ordinance. Um, and then also because this is a, um, utility franchise, then at the next meeting also, the council will be asked to pass a resolution that dispenses an election to approve the franchise, sort of a unique part of utility franchise. Right, franchises in Iowa, so that's all the next steps for this, but, um, this ordinance has been reviewed by the city attorney and by Black Hills Energy.
Is there a number on that? It doesn't list a number on the agenda?
Um, the ordinance is number nine...35.
Nine thirty-five, okay. Okay, so looking for the motion for the resolution 3716 to set the date for the public hearing.
So moved, McEwen?
Second?
Kate's.
Is that also happening June 10?
No.
Five twenty-seven. Okay, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Kate?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Lines?
Yes.
So item 15 is the first reading of the gas franchise ordinance with Black Hills Energy, and, um, this I just need a motion to approve the first reading.
So moved, Smithers?
Second?
Kate's.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Kate?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Lines?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
Um, 16 is the community development block grant downtown revitalization project. Um, just need a motion to approve pay up number two to cornerstone commercial contractors in the amount of $8,118.20.
Motion?
Lines?
Second?
McEwen?
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Lines?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Okay. So then at this time, we have a possible motion going to closed session in accordance with Iowa Code 21.51J to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could reasonably expect it to increase the price. The governmental body would have to pay for that property or reduce the price that they would receive for that property. The minutes and audio recording of the session closed under this paragraph shall be available for public examination when the transaction is completed. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Smithers?
Is there a second?
Lines?
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
McEwen?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes. Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
Lines?
Yes.
Okay. So at, what time is it? My watch died.
Seven forty-eight.
We are going into closed session. We will... Hold notes. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you. I gotta switch over from YouTube to those meetings.
Yep.
Do you want me to just mute YouTube and leave it up, or you want me to completely get out of it?
Can you just mute it?
I can.